Two with a roll call, please.
Councilman O'Nolan. Councilman Boskow.
Here.
Councilman Pollak. Councilman Edgar.
Here.
Councilman Paul. Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Kinsler.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Spock.
Here.
I will. Good boy.
All right, first item on the agenda is discussion resolution, resolution approving Rare Hospitality, Inc. as the operator of the Longhorn Steakhouse. Whereas on August 18, 2006, the town of Enfield sold the property known as BR1 in the Enfield Memorial Industrial Park, known as the property, to Enfield Lodging LLC. And on August 18, 2006, the town of Enfield, the Enfield Development Agency and the Enfield Lodging LLC executed Declaration of Restrictive Covenants regarding the property. And whereas Enfield Lodging LLC has constructed the Hampton Inn on the property, whereas Enfield Lodging LLC desires to construct a Longhorn Steakhouse on the property, and whereas paragraph three of the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants requires that Enfield Lodging LLC obtain the town's approval for the proposed restaurant operator, and whereas Rare Hospitality, Inc. will be the operator of the Longhorn Steakhouse on the property. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rare Hospitality, Inc. is hereby granted approval to operate the Longhorn Steakhouse on the property. And be it further resolved. What are you laughing about?
Sidebar.
I thought maybe it was because of rare and steak.
That's good, yeah.
Be it further resolved that the town manager is hereby authorized to sign the attached approval letter.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any words of wisdom on this?
I only have to say that after many, many a moon, we finally have a restaurant going into a place as council that were at least with us way back when council wrote into the sale of the land for this that you would have the ability to approve the restaurant that would go in there, that it would be a sit-down type restaurant that would bring value to the rest of the community. We had a false start a few years ago. Longhorn is back and I believe they've gotten all their approvals through the planning and zoning. And I appreciate you entertaining tonight, but they are ready to start building. We wanted to get going.
Any discussions, Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Just, I approve this, or I support this. Suppose Longhorn goes three years and they leave. The next restaurant coming in, will they also have to come forward?
Yeah, I believe, that's a good question. Yeah, I believe that yes.
Trying to go back to 2006. I believe that we drafted it that it was.
Forever, forever.
Yeah, if it wasn't a one-time approval, then you could do whatever you want after that.
So it's a D. Okay.
I'll double check it.
Thank you.
Councilman Mangini.
Yeah, I just have one question, thank you. Matt, did you say they've already gone through planning and zoning?
Yes.
So really, we just need to approve the resolution?
Yep.
Anything further? So she'll say, "Well done."
Well done.
It's a rare opportunity to have a steakhouse come to Enfield.
Do we vote down Monday or Monday?
What's that? We're voting on it tonight.
Okay.
And.
So we can tomorrow morning give them the go-ahead and they can stake out their land.
They can stake out their land, A prime.
Stake an A for Saturday morning breakfast?
It's good to see they weren't colorizing progress.
Let's get on with this before they get even cornier.
I don't have a beef with the law.
Too late. You're just kowtowing to the rest of the group.
Kowtowing to the rest, you don't have a beef with the law.
You really need to steer this guy.
I could have saved you the trouble. I went to my medium today and she told me it would go right through.
Any further discussions?
For the door.
I think it's a great, first of all, seriously.
It's a prime restaurant.
It's a prime restaurant. It's a great addition and there's a reason why we had the covenant on BR1. We wanted to make sure that it was a proper restaurant that attracted folks and complemented the hotel and the industrial park.
That's no bull.
That's no bull. Well done, sensing no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boskow.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Mayor Copeland.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Four.
Councilman Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Four.
I guess we put a four, four or something.
What was that?
We put a four.
I was trying to come up with a different affirmative word.
You were going to moo and that was.
I was gonna moo, but I'm like, eh. You read my mind and I was like, all right. It must be budget time.
Yes.
Fancy, we're punchy already. All right, budget hearing, first department on the deck. Information Technology. Hello, Mr. Russell.
Hello, how's it going?
Going fine, how are you?
Good, thank you. So.
Hi Cindy. You want to join Mr. Russell or is he all set?
I think she's here to heckle.
She's here to heckle, so she's here as a resident, okay.
Okay. Okay, again, the primary services that.
He's in it too.
Yes. That the Information Technology Department is, is again, our mission is to provide highly secure, highly available and open access to information for appropriate use to better and make improved government and education services through the uses of technology. Our organization chart is, we're made up of 15 representatives. Myself, the Chief Technology Officer, we have a project coordinator as well as a project manager. These two positions are key as things are changing and new technologies are becoming available. They help us implement and keep things on track and within budget. Our technical staff, the desktop support services, that's for all the computers and devices that all the employees, students and teachers, administrators use throughout the town. This helps, this group keeps 3,200-plus devices that are part of our network up and running and making sure that they're up to date with their patches and working properly for operations. Our next group is the customer services group, which is an area where we have, we've really focused more on bringing in a service attitude from our help desk. And we'll talk about that a little bit later and kind of the technique that we've put in place for servicing requests from our customers. We have a systems analyst that is key in providing foresight and uses of our main information system from MUNIS. We also have a webmaster, which again is our primary footprint for allowing information out on the internet about our organization and keeping communications through the community based upon web browsing for the individuals. Our network is our infrastructure. This is all the stuff behind the walls where it allows the communications between devices, the file storage, the email system, everything that is behind the walls is where our network team is made up of. And we have three individuals that are in charge of that area. Our 2013-14 objectives are to implement a work order solution, inventory control for DPW, EMS and IT. We're, we will be implementing, we're in the process of starting to build processes and improve processes using the MUNIS work orders and inventory management control. We envision this helping us to streamline services from the request to the completion for all aspects of the Department of Public Works as well as IT. And EMS is going to take advantage of the inventory control system. This will allow us to no longer have to just purchase large amounts of inventory, but we'll be able to track those and integrate with the finance system so that we can do more of a just-in-time ordering instead of a bulk ordering. Again, saving space is one of the key areas, but also not having to overspend, you know, for guesswork. We'll be able to have better control over our inventory. We look to continue reducing our operational expenses through standardization of technologies and bringing in centralized management solutions so that we can take advantage of our network and not have to add additional people to support such large, you know, numbers of devices. And as we continue to roll out wireless, there's a magnitude of unmanaged devices that we have coming onto our network. Since we rolled out the new network, we were able to see exactly how many devices that we've had, different, unique devices attached to our network since January. And since January, we just broke the 11,000 mark of devices that have been on our network that have unique identifiers, they're called MAC addresses, that we've registered. So between residents, students, employees, visitors, when they grab a hold of our wireless network, we transition them to the proper access, whether it's going through internet or it could be accessing resources on our network. We're looking to establish the IT support for North Thompsonville Fire Department. We provide support now for the other four fire districts. And North Thompsonville is the next on the list. This will help us particularly as we look to do the site plans for buildings. So when they respond to fire, they'll be able to pull up site plans regardless of what district you're in but for the fire trucks. So again, giving them more information when they're responding to calls. And this will help along those areas. Another request that we're looking to do is refresh technologies for the teachers and the elementary labs. Last year, there was a decision made to purchase the laptops. Those laptops, kind of as we suspected, are failing at a large rate. They, you know, those, the teacher laptops that were purchased, when we originally decided to do the process was to put on an operational lease and replace those laptops every three years. We're in year four now and we're really finding that they are failing at a large rate to the point where we don't have spares right now, so we're creeping along. So the plan is to certainly replace those laptops. And also the elementary labs, the primary elementary labs, the K through two schools were, when the reorg happened, weren't really taken care of as far as technology because it wasn't seen as a necessity at that young age. But as we continue forward and we see the benefits of technology, the education side is really, those devices are 10 years plus older, so we really need to replace those. And those are failing at a large rate. So as we look at the desktop support services that we have of four people with these, this older equipment and not part of our standard platform, it really becomes overbearing to be able to support such an older PC or desktop population that we really have to focus back on getting into some sort of standard process. By doing, implementing the stoneware project, we're able to do that. Allow for multitude of different devices to come over onto one access point allows for us to be able to do that central management. So we're not worried about so many end devices. But those labs are very old, the primary elementary schools. And coordinate departmental efficiency. We've taken on several projects, process improvements, one that we've done in IT. We had a sense that we were not performing as we should, as well as we could with service requests coming in. We did a survey. Our turnaround time for requests was averaging around four and a half to five business days depending on those requests. Could be new requests or it could be break fix. We put in a solution that goes to a service desk model where I've aligned people up front to take the calls as they come in. Before it was emails would come in, sit in a queue and they'd get assigned as a resource was available. Now we're looking at those up front, kind of doing a level-one triage of those requests and either solving them immediately right on the phone or as they get into the queue. And then we're resolving 70% of them on that first call or first indication, which is great. Instead of waiting for people to come back to it. So we were able to turn that four-plus-day turnaround time to just under a day and a half now. So the same amount of people, just redirecting them in a process, we've been able to provide better customer services for the employees that use our technology. The changes in our operations, we're going to continue converting to our service desk operations since it's such, it really has paid off benefits for our customers that use our technologies to, when they put in their request, they can pretty much be sure that we're going to get their request on a break fix resolved within that day, which is again, a great, significant improvement for operations because the length of time that they're without those services is the length of time that they're not able to take advantage of the technologies. Our 2014 budget breakdown, salaries are a little over 992,000. The benefits are 376,000. Professional and technical services are 1,053,000. Other purchase services are 511,000. These are telecom services primarily in that area. Professional and technical are all our software licensing, consulting services and mostly the licensing. This is where we, our bulk of expenses are. Supplies and materials, 10,000, 940. We had an increase on the cost of gas as there's been a new direction as far as reallocating, using the town provided cars and paying for the gasoline and, you know, in our vehicles. And that went up significantly from what we had last year. Technology equipment, we've added two leases. One was for the Board of Ed, replacing the teacher devices and elementary labs. And then also with the testing requirements, we had an additional line item of 55,000 to cover any technology needs that we need for the statewide testing that's coming down the road. Again, not really knowing what that is going to be needed. We just know that we didn't have the technology available for the third through, the third grade students through eighth grade students to be able to take these tests, especially all throughout that timeframe. They're looking at 1,800 students getting access to computerized and internet access throughout this testing phase and we certainly didn't have the available equipment for that. And the total budget is $4,044,000. Some of the deviations from our 2013 budget, the technology equipment is $168,000 above what we had for 2013. Telecom is up $132,000 from last year and a lot of that is to provide additional internet access for the schools. They have one internet pipe right now that's provided by CEN. Again, to handle the bandwidth requirements of the devices and the requirements to get out to the internet now are much larger and more expensive, obviously. But it's roughly $132,000 increase. Technology services have increased by $58,000. And we have a reduction in personal services of $92,000. And again, from salaries and benefits, we've had some attrition that we haven't refilled those positions. So we went from 17 down to 15 right now. Some of the additional kind of descriptions, again, the largest component of the equipment increase was definitely due to the adding of a three-year lease for 900 computers or devices. And again, not knowing what the direction for the technology is going to be for the Board of Ed. We, you know, we know there's 900 devices that are aged and need replacement. Not sure what that, what those end devices are going to look like. Telecommunication increases are due to increased bandwidth requirements for internet access for school devices, the iPads, Apple TV, educational video websites that are now being very prevalently used for education, which is great. But we need to increase the bandwidth capabilities of it. As well as the district-wide testing that's coming next year. It's coming pretty fast and furious. Additional cellular costs for mobile devices, smartphones, tablets. We've gone away from the BlackBerrys and the Sprints. Sprint services are poor and using the BlackBerrys, the BlackBerry devices, those are no longer acceptable. So as we migrate to smartphone devices outside of the BlackBerrys, the costs have increased. And that's where we'll see, you know, a bump in our cellular cost for that. Technology services increase are from increased licenses for data force, for public safety, mobile use, the police department, the fire departments and EMS, all access the data force system remotely from their vehicles and there's been an additional licensing added to that. Increased fees for services, you know, typical maintenance fees for new vision, vision, stoneware, e-school and et cetera, those have gone up based upon CPI, the Consumer Pricing Index, usually an additional anywhere between 2 to 4%. We've added the MUNIS work order system for Department of Public Works and IT. And then again, the personal services, we had a decrease. And again, that was due to attrition and not refilling those positions. Some potential modifications to the budget, a reduction of the BOE expenses. They eliminated a software that is in this budget, but as we met with at the ITPC, they're eliminating ProTrax, which is a tracking software for CEUs that they can, that they're not required to track anymore, so that's $10,000. And then E-rate reductions for the telecom. The number of 501,000 that's at our telecom side will be reduced by 111,000 due to E-rate savings. So for the schools, we're at approximately 50% of cost that E-rate will supply that for. It's required not to take that directly off of the budget. They, the, from our E-rate consultant, it's necessary to budget for that, but it's pretty certain that we would get that reduction from that. But they want us to see, they want to see us budget for the full dollar amount. So that in the event it's reduced, we budget for that full amount. But we don't anticipate that getting, that being removed, the E-rate. Other potential increases are certainly services and equipment required for non-Windows devices to the network. As we look to add BYOD and other devices, we have a managed network of Windows equipment on that and that allows us to manage easily, provide images and get those devices in alignment. If we're looking at adding non-Windows type devices to our network and having to support that, our support structure doesn't, doesn't, isn't capable of supporting that multi-open platform standard where you could have, you know, Linux, Macs, iOS's and that. As we add these different technologies, if we, if the IT department is expected to manage those, then the resources will either have to look for either additional equipment for management capabilities. Mobile devices, they have products that are available called mobile device management that allows us to bring it in, but that's not in this budget. Nobody's talked about doing that, but if that does come down the road, those are expenses that will be incurred that we're not aware of. Other technologies to be supported, Android, iOS. Again, if there's going to be a plethora of non-Windows devices coming onto our network and IT is going to be tasked with supporting those, it will be an additional cost. And again, the main emphasis was when we brought in a product like stoneware, that would be the gateway for these non-managed devices. But if that proves not to be the gateway that is chosen to be used and they want to go directly to, anybody using those devices want to directly connect in the network, then we have to find some sort of management mechanism and that will be a change in our philosophy. So that's it for IT and welcome any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Questions? Start with Cindy, go to Tom.
Just if you could clarify, the support for the North Thompsonville Fire Department, are we supporting all the fire departments or just that one?
We're supporting the other four fire departments. Earl's, you know, he was, he wanted to wait till we got everything in place and make, you know, make sure the other groups are going to be happy with it. So we're hoping to sell them on our services coming soon.
Okay, now will they be paying the town?
Yes.
Do the other fire departments get to?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And is that money reflected in your budget?
Yes, it is. It's one of the revenues.
Okay, and then the other question I have, with regards to the Board of Ed's expenses, it's like $120,000 for a cost savings to the town side?
That's, well, that would be, it would be a reduction of what the Board of Ed would have to contribute.
So who's carrying that cost, the town side or is that just eliminated because?
Just be eliminated.
It would be eliminated.
So how much is your budget increasing from last year?
From last year is increasing. The difference is 7.2% overall.
About $280,000 roughly.
Correct.
And you said primarily that's due to changing technology?
Correct.
Lock grades and whatnot?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Cindy. Tom?
It's kind of a side question so that down the road I have the information. But in terms of the Board of Ed, they have started to do some things separate from the IT department as, I want to say like their own IT department?
Okay.
Follow me so far?
Yes.
Okay. For this past several months and now going forward. Do you see, A, any redundancies in there that you could currently handle?
No, no. One of the, one of the resources that threw attrition is they hired one of our systems analysts to do all school-related technology. So they've taken on that workload so we don't have to provide support for the e-school, IEP+.
And then the second question I had was regarding MUNIS. I know that in my experience with it in other towns and what I've heard so far here in a couple of years is that as you, as you grow into using the systems, bringing on the inventory system, different software startups, you have a load to get people up to speed, programmers, all that.
Correct.
Where do you see that in its, you know, next year, this year compared to last year in terms of the workload that you guys have with that?
Well, I, I'll, each year, each year there's going to be upgrades and I'm sure we'll be continuing to implement additional systems, whether they're part of the MUNIS package or not. I see it continuing, you know, at least at the level we're at and then increasing based upon newer systems such as, the work order system is a newer system. So we're adding that workload.
So you don't see a, whew, all right, we got that done?
No.
Okay.
I see this as a, and as soon as we have it done, there's a new version that's out and with a large financial system, we put that in test and really run it through its rigors before we roll that live. So it's usually about a three-month process to get it through to testing and updates, making sure all the enhancements work as billed and that it doesn't change anything that we already have in existence.
Okay, thanks, I'm good.
Any further questions? Ken?
Is this your proposed budget, Matt? Is this the number you came up with in your budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this is, how was your original budget different than this before, Matt?
This was, this was it.
This was it?
Yeah.
So you didn't change anything?
No.
Just, are we going through this? $70,000 roughly, based on the write-up that you gave us, but that might have been in revenue.
Well, a couple, a couple of things that most likely changed was the distribution of the workers' comp costs and also the pension costs. And you're going to see that in different departments where I didn't really do anything other than when we went to the disbursement of those costs, changed them.
Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else? I have one question that was on the slide just because Matt and I met with the superintendent and the board chair a couple of days ago and. and the board chair a couple of days ago, and again, they were talking about their budget, and they said that they're going to have a meeting with you, I think, yesterday or whenever, this week. Is that 121 that's up on your slide a result of the most recent meeting? You know, is that further, further reductions from?
Yes, since our meeting, yes. That was, yeah, the very next day.
That was a result of that, of that ITPC meeting, that they were looking for clarifications in the IT budget.
Correct. And there's actually, it was sent out late yesterday, but they updated that spreadsheet they had given to us, which I'll get out to council as well. They had eliminated the $55,000 on the lease for the testing equipment as well, so that number is a little bit smaller as well.
So that's another fifty?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have just a systems question. The GIS system?
Yes.
Is that still a hosted service by the provider?
Yes. Yeah, we, we have the capability of bringing it on board. We have to do one of our CIP requests to bring in the server for it.
Will it be Apple compatible at that point?
As far as Safari or Firefox? I believe so. I can, I can check on that. Well, we, because it was going to benefit a lot of the information that's going to be used for the fire department site plans and working with that, and I know that their, their plans are to use iPads and some of the vehicles and that, but I'll verify that.
So you would expect a performance improvement regardless?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. If I could, are we going to do this separately, or is, are we, can we dive into the, a couple of the numbers?
You can dive as you want.
I mean, it's, it's actually quite enlightening the way that, you can see things broken down. Just, I'm just curious about a couple where we've got, this is page nine, where it goes through some of the academic packages.
Okay.
And I don't expect an answer now, someone could follow up with me. I'm just curious why the unit quantity for some of these things appears to be 12. I guess my question is, is that number of grades?
Monthly.
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 Thank you. I'm all set, Cindy.
Tom?
Hey, just a quick on the GIS and cellphone applications, too. You can't pull it up on cell phones.
Smartphones?
Yeah, smartphones.
Especially for, more than likely, probably from an iPhone.
Right. Is that something that could be fixed in the future also?
That's, that's what I'm going to check on as well, yes. So it'll, it'll affect all iOS. I'm sure we'll check for Android, Windows phones.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's more the language I understand here.
My "we."
Thanks.
You don't actually have a "my."
The "we"?
The "we," whatever. I think the "we" might be Safari as well.
Yeah, I believe it is.
Anyone else? Do employees who attend budget workshops get any, you know, special bonus from their department?
I got a half a ham sandwich over here.
They get to spend more time with me.
We had made a deal that if you asked for an employee's raise and they were here, we were going to grant it tonight, but since you didn't ask.
Sorry. Now, now these are going to be slammed.
My grievance will be on your desk in the morning.
That's the biggest bad about going first.
Right. Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in and the presentation.
Thank you.
When we're done, I guess.
Well, I think we're done now. It'd go a lot quicker from here on out. A lot quicker.
A lot quicker. Are we going in, in order of the agenda?
Yes.
So that means our next presentation is by our town attorney, Mr. Kevin Dennehy, S.R.
Thank you. I knew I was in trouble following the technology guide because I was showing my.
Where's your, where's your PowerPoint?
My PowerPoint processes have, as a lawyer, you're still in the paper. As you all know, the Town Attorney's Office is responsible for researching and writing legal opinions, reviewing and drafting ordinances, contracts, agreements, other documents. We represent and defend the town's interest in litigation, arbitration, administrative, appeals, and similar proceedings. We deal a lot and seem to be increasing dealing with FOI requests and some very much out of the box FOI requests that we've done under. We support the various departments, collection of taxes, acquisition and sale of real estate, enforcement of ordinances, we work with the various departments on that. We also work with the Safety Committee and Risk Manager over the last several years, building up a little bit more on that. I have to say, it certainly compares in some of the other towns that my office currently represents, we've been involved with. The town manager in Enfield is a heavy user of legal services.
Ouch.
Much more.
Serious?
Well, it's a much more proactive approach to it. I can tell you a lot of other departments, you know, over the last five or six years, we've averaged 250 to 275 reviews a year of contracts and other documents on that. Most other towns, we don't routinely review contracts unless it's a major contract, a building contract, or a construction contract that's on that. It does lend itself to a lot of cost avoidance down the road. It's sometimes hard to quantify because you can't say we avoided this litigation or this other issue, but I can certainly say over the last several years that I've been here, we've certainly seen that that's on there. Overall, the budget that we're presenting hasn't, doesn't really change much at all. We really have salary, staff, and benefits, and then I really like when they put the percentages, and we have a 66% increase in our office supplies because we went from $150 to $250 on that one.
Don't know how that got by them.
Well, you know, we didn't have the percentages in the document at that point. But that's, several years ago, we went from two support staff down to one, and you can see that actually in the FY3 to FY2 actuals that were on there. And that's it, we're fairly busy. Within the legal services budget, there is $15,000, which is the amount for litigation expense and the labor expense, any other conflicts, that's really a number that's hard to predict year to year. We brought that down, we were able to do a lot more in-house with regard to the labor stuff that's typically farmed out. But again, that's the only one that's sort of unpredictable depending on what litigation gets instigated and whether they resolve quickly or not. So it's a much more, simpler budget, I think, than a less complicated budget than the IT one we just went through, but we'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Questions on the town attorney's budget?
Good job.
On the papers we were given tonight, your budget, your personal budget's not on here?
It is. That's in the legal item, which is 533-200. If you switch over to page, the detail of it is on page three. Page three, right down here where it says legal, town attorney compensation.
$70,000.
Fifty-five is for me, and then the 15 is that litigation component and outside services. Which is, it's actually right here, too. Legal.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Anyone else? Town attorney's budget, anyone else?
Is the, I have one question.
Yep, go ahead, Tom.
The mileage, is that, is that mileage for travel, basically, going up to?
It's not for me. It's for the staff.
Right.
The staff have to live in a hard position to go for an FOI commission or hearing and use their own vehicle.
That's what runs the lot, it looks like, huh?
Well, the IRS mileage limitation has gone significantly up, as gas prices and everything else.
No, great job. Thank you.
Cindy?
Kevin, it's a nice clean budget, thank you. Thanks for your hard work.
Anyone else? Very good.
Are you benefited?
No.
No. Thank you.
Would you like to be?
You benefit from us.
Last year, right? I remember now.
Kevin, don't you feel like you benefit from being with us?
I do.
Thank you, Kevin. You going to stick around for the other ones?
I have to pick up a soccer player in Parkington, and I know I'll be able to watch Steve's presentation on ETV tomorrow. I think, emergency, me as the thanks.
Looks like Steve found your $150.
I thought you had, um.
Human Resources.
HR, yes.
Got a half a ham sandwich over there.
Everybody eat the other half.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize if I speak fast. I was told to get this done in five minutes or start updating my resume, so I'm going to mosey on right along.
You'd be the guy that knows how to do that, right?
Let me start off by saying my budget went down by $277.
Thanks for coming.
Let me just tell you what we've been up to. Mission statement is still the same, as which is provide quality service to the area of benefits, personnel, administration, to town employees. We have, since last year, we've had a part-timer in my office, who's currently my Matthews. Phenomenal job helping us out, getting a lot of filing done, a lot of the backlog that was accumulating, which is beneficial to us when we get audited and they look for 10 personnel folders, they'll see that it's been updated and everything's been filed, so a tremendous asset to have that part-timer. And we've also, since last year, we've moved into a new department, so a new office. Feel free to stop by. Let's see. This year is a busy year. I have currently four contracts that are expiring. I just started negotiations, or I will be starting negotiations imminently, and I'll be coming to you guys to apprise you of what we are going to be proposing, but two big contracts, the police contract, the Department of Public Works, and supervisory contract, and professional technical union. We just wrapped up the clerical one, and hopefully I'll have the EMS one before you guys in a matter of a month or two. Couple other objectives is, we rolled out open enrollment for all employees through DSS. We are looking to do that for performance evaluations this year. And another thing on the objective list that I want to highlight was drafting an RFP for actuarial services and pension investment services. That's something that hasn't been done in quite some time, and it's something that's time to go out to the market and see what's out there. Last page of the slide, these numbers are pretty much similar to last year. We did reduce unemployment compensation down to 120. I noticed that it's been trending down partially because extended benefits has been discontinued, and unless we have a massive layoffs or something, I don't foresee that number going up, increasing unemployment. But professional technical is about the same. I do, during this budget period, anticipate doing a police recruitment, which is a large task on our part, and anyone who's come out to that recruitment, you'll see what we, it's a big undertaking. But other than that, though, it's $277 less than it was last year, so I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
I have a comment.
All right. Go ahead, Tom.
I love your new office, I love your people, and you get a bright, cheery, friendly HR, not that it wasn't friendly before, but it's just, it's really nice to go in there. Good job.
Thank you.
Questions, Tom?
Yeah, could you explain a little bit on your advertising budget? Where do you advertise now? Where are you looking, where are you spending those dollars?
I try to avoid spending it, it depends on what we're recruiting for, how far I need to cast the net. For police recruitment, that's, that can be a wide end. And that's why I bumped it up, because last year I, or the last recruitment, I advertised in the New York Post. That's a lot of eyeballs reading that paper, and I got some good recruits, and we've hired some good hires from NYPD, believe it or not. They don't pay very well out there, and they see what we're offering here, they're like, you know, learn, learn there, come earn over here. So, but ink, every time you advertise in ink, it's expensive.
Right.
Hartford colon, it can be expensive.
So we are still advertising in ink as much as we possibly can? I think that's important to.
Yep. Also, for police, I do it in, there's a minority newspaper, I try to get as much diversity as I can. That helps us for our CLIA certification, helps us for our EEO numbers to cast a net as broad and as wide as possible. But if I can avoid using it sometimes, you know, if it's a local thing, you know, sometimes all I need to do is put it on the website for some associations, you know, and then that doesn't cost as much or it's not as expensive, but there is sometimes a cost.
So some of the, most of those internet ones also that are out there, especially specialized ones are relatively inexpensive, are they?
Comparatively speaking, compared to ink. Ink is expensive. But if it's just an electronic thing on someone's website, it's not as expensive.
Great. Thank you.
Cindy?
I just want to say thank you, it was a nice, clean budget, and good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just, can you, again, on the unemployment number, and I know we bumped that up at a time when we were laying folks off.
Yep.
And so it's, you're maintaining at 120. What's the rationalization?
Well, the prior year, we spent like 146, and that's when it was bumped up to 150, but that's when we knew they were still mandating extended benefits. You know, traditionally it's 26 weeks, they doubled it to 52, and then they even extended it beyond that, but then I, that's been discontinued. So a lot of it depends on the labor market. Employees, we've had employees that we let go, but they found jobs right away, so they're not collecting as long. You know, sometimes it's a little bit of a crapshoot as far as what we need to allocate because, you know, sometimes there's terminations that are unforeseeable, but for the most part, I think 120 covers it because that's what was close to last year with the numbers, unless there's some bump that I'm at, we're seeing, 120 should cover it this year.
And so far this year, we're?
Well, keep in mind, it's, they're always like two months in behind. It's so, it's so nerve-wracking trying to guess what our numbers are because Jen Baker in our office, who pays the bill, you know, we're two years, there's always bill two months behind, I don't know why.
Right now, it looks like that's a whole lot spent.
Yeah, and I was, I saw that as well, and because it's a round number, there's something wrong.
There's something wrong with it.
Well, it's probably all encumbered.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm.
Knowing Jen, she probably encumbered it.
Yeah.
Which is.
She encumbers it on July 1.
Which makes it easier for you. That's what we've been preaching, right?
So we, we'll get what the actual expenditure is out of that.
I can, I can do the year-to-date, if you like.
Yeah.
I can put that up. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, just, and this is the general one for non-union employees, so understanding that it's HR, that the benefits administrator and the personnel administrator are non-union. So you, Matt, in your budget, have you allocated funds in a separate area for the typical non-union pay raise conversation that the council has?
Yeah, as well as, understanding we have four contracts open, so, you know, what we typically do is we do set aside those numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Great. Anyone else? Steve, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, Dan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, like the town attorney, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. The emergency management budget, which we have for you, is basically level funded as it was for the current fiscal year. The categories where the fundings are appropriated have pretty much stayed the same based on what we foresee for the upcoming year. Current fiscal year we're in right now has been a lot less active compared to the year before, when we had to deal with four presidential decre, three presidential declarations and a bunch of incidents and activities. We have had two substantial incidents that required full-scale activation, Hurricane Sandy and then Winter Storm Nemo. Fortunately, for one field, in terms of power outages, we were spared substantially from having to deal with a lot of traumatic damages compared to other parts of the state and the Northeast, and especially in terms of Winter Storm Sandy, which was devastating to the south of us and an all-around, and I think a lot of it is geography and terrain that is really, was to our benefit. However, we do continue to work preparing and planning. We are currently in the process of working with FEMA on getting reimbursement for the 72-hour window that FEMA, the president has declared to be eligible for reimbursement. We think it's roughly about $100,000 cost that may. We think it's a roughly about $100,000 cost that may be eligible. We have to do some review, uh, still based on Public Works and Police and then meet with the FEMA and if, depending on what the final eligible amount of reimbursement is, then we will pursue, uh, 75% reimbursement, which is what FEMA allows. The other thing, which as we know is a sore point in this community, I have already brought it to the attention of the state about the need for them to expedite the pass-through of the FEMA money, once it's awarded to Enfield, to this community through their agency. And as you know, last year, we waited over nearly six months for that to occur and required some intervention from, uh, congressmen to, uh, make that happen for us. The, uh, some of the other areas, just, we continue in emergency management, we continue with our, uh, twice-a-year emergency management workshop, which we hold for department heads and also local community, uh, agencies here in the community. We do want to know, we tried to do one, initially it was gonna be done on the end of October, uh, in 2012, but because of Hurricane Sandy, we had to kick it back to later into November. Uh, the, and I had purposely moved the winter one back several weeks to try to avoid, based on what I had dealt with Alfred. I'm almost concerned about trying to move it back to Labor Day, not knowing what we're gonna get hit with then. Uh, the, uh, next one will be in June. Uh, we will, uh, in the beginning of June, that one we will be focusing on, not only in our seasonal preparations, but we're gonna be focusing on some of the local assets we have here in Enfield, uh, that have been developed, uh, that's available for the local emergency agencies in responding to an incident. We've recently put a hun, had 158 Town of Enfield employees go through the Red Cross Shelter Worker Training. Uh, we did that through four, through, uh, three classes in one day, uh, three hours per class. We did one shift in the morning, one in the afternoon, and one in the evening. And so that we have a cadre of personnel trained that can work in the event we hopefully do not experience a situation like we did after Winter Storm Alfred, where we have a sustained sheltering operation. So our organizational capacity to hopefully address an incident like this has improved. Uh, we also, uh, are pushing to get re, uh, fresher training from CLMP with our Public Works crews on what we call make-safe training, where they, where they, CLMP would work, crew would work with our Public Works team when they have a situation with down wires, mixing with wires and debris, trees with debris, and erodis block, that CLMP comes in, makes safe, and we can clear the road right away. We did that very effectively during Winter Storm, during Hurricane, I mean Hurricane Sandy, and we wanna have that on an annual basis so that we can hopefully avoid the risk of anybody getting injured from, uh, down wires mixing with tree and debris. Uh, and then, um, we are all, we are working, I am working with the emergency, with the EMS captain, Chuck Grasso, who is also the emergency management assistant in, uh, group, in, uh, the emergency management operations. Fortunately, he does have experience in a number of different areas and we are working on some different projects right now, not only just the Nemo reimbursement, but also on our reunification plan, which, uh, we wanted to put in place. We need to update for the schools. That's it in a nutshell, uh, from the emergency management side. And the only other comment I would just have is in the CIP budget, uh, we had a request, uh, which unfortunately did not make it uh, for a new generator for Fermi High School that would provide power to the entire building. Uh, we are gonna continue to link that request because we see the need to have more than one facility of that size, uh, with a generator of that capacity. We, in talking with the school building committee, uh, from representative, our staff liaison, uh, for the new Enfield High School, that building will have a full-power generator, I've been told. So that, along with JFK, will give a two facilities and we hope to get, uh, Fermi High School online, that same, so that we have some flexibility in the event we have a large-scale incident or we lose one or two of the other two facilities, uh, due to any number of different factors. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Cindy?
Thank you, Dan. Um, again, you know, you always do a great job for us. Thank you. With regards to the generator, I remember that discussion. I remember the, the need for that. What is the cost for generator?
We are requesting $220,000 for diesel-powered generator. It's a big building and it's gonna require a good-sized generator, councilman.
Are there any grant monies available?
We are procuring grants, uh, but we also have to look at other facilities in the town where we wanna pursue for grants. And within that is our priority to get our sewer pump station generators. A number of them are up there in age. Uh, during Alfred, we had a couple that we had to bring in on emergency-based rentals and we wanna get them restored because as much as we'd like to have a facility, another facility with a full-power generator, we can't afford to lose a sewer pump station. That is from environment, health and public safety perspective, huge.
So we're worse than, than, again, the generator, all people sewer.
Sanitary, the W pollution control system, absolute, that, we're really focusing on that.
Thank you, Dan.
Tom?
On FEMA reporting, um, now I, I believe that FEMA wants, uh, certain electronic reporting now from its department head, so if you have a department head out at a disaster, they're gonna require electronic pictures, um, and files with iPads. And, and I heard there was some money out there to be able to make sure our department heads, uh, get those iPads so they can report properly to, to FEMA.
Right, what we do when we have the documentation is, because we have iPhones already with our department heads and with a number of our staff, they can take digital photos of, of, uh, any piles. For example, we had our initial sit-down with FEMA on Nemo. We had photo, digital photos of the snow piles out of Brainerd Park available to show them as documented proof, uh, especially given the nature of that situation, that, that, we met with them like a month and a half after the incident and we wasn't sure we were gonna have the same amount of snow present. Uh, the, uh, a lot of that was lessons learned from Alfred, where there was huge debris piles and trying to get that documented.
So we're all set in this, that line? Great, thank you very much.
Anyone else for Dan?
Um, just a comment, at the Ascanic Spring Splash, the, uh, the trailer...
Correct.
Uh, was out and it was, uh, great to see that they have some form of mobile capacity and the setup there and, and I spoke to them briefly and it seems like they, whoever secured the trailer and got it outfitted did a really good job and it came in, uh, very inexpensively.
Yes, that was our building and grounds division personnel. Uh, they do outstanding work. And that, this fitting out on the interior was done entirely by them and then our Public Works, uh, Highway Division Sign Unit, uh, did the lettering. They're gonna go back and do some other signage, but, uh, a substantial amount of money was saved by them doing that work, uh, within the Public Works Department.
Okay, so it's done totally in-house. Nice, nice. Any other questions for Dan and emergency manager? Great, thank you very much. Matt? Town manager's budget.
Good evening.
Is there a PowerPoint presentation?
Uh, unfortunately, the lamp is going out, so I won't be able to do that tonight, so it'll just be a, a verbal oral presentation.
You can send it to our, our iPad.
For some reason, I have no connection. I just, you know, as soon as Paul left, it just went blank.
Dark fiber.
The dark, the fiber went dark. And as councilware, our office handles a, a variety of, uh, duties for the Town of Enfield, um, and most of them aren't done by me, so. Well, it's true, uh, you know, whether it's the constituent follow-up and overseeing a number of different important departments and operations by Dan, uh, if it's handling, uh, the calls coming in, scheduling of meetings, uh, by Deb, or, uh, a lot of the work in terms of the filing and ETV by Maya, um, you know, our office tends to be a very, very busy place, uh, on a daily basis. And, uh, as the workload has increased and the abilities of our staff has increased, we, we just keep taking on more and more. And I know we had a conversation in last year's, uh, budget discussions about bringing Maya on full-time. Uh, in this year's budget, I have accounted for her position going from a nineteen-and-a-half, uh, hour week to a full-time position. We felt that, uh, besides the obvious of, of having the coverage within the office, uh, for the phones and for walk-ins, that at times we do lack, uh, we're also getting, as you're aware, a person who's very skilled, working with ETV and doing a number of different, uh, promotional programs for us. We like to see that increase, uh, with her coming on full-time. I'd also like to say that, uh, something you may not think about and it really has been, uh, something that has taken a lot of, uh, time from our office, is the amount of meetings that we are now handling, uh, with, whether it's the, uh, security committee, uh, whether it's the subcommittees of council, you know, our requirements to take minutes and, and produce those have been kind of bogging us down. And so adding, uh, additional time into the office for, uh, Maya will allow us to get caught up there and hopefully get more done on the, uh, posting of those minutes and such. So salary, we moved some money that was in the part-time, which we had budgeted 13.5 in the current year, uh, takes her up, uh, you know, that money's moved up into the salaries. It adds the, uh, benefits, obviously, whether it's healthcare or, or what we'll be paying in for, uh, the increase in the Medicare and social se, or social security. The, really, the only other area that, uh, would be a sizable increase is in our printing and reproduction. And originally, what we had talked about and went in as the department request was going back to the annual report that we were doing. And, and it's something that, that, you know, we, we unfortunately, a few years ago, eliminated because of, uh, reductions in budget, but it is something that we continually hear from people that they miss. It just, again, we, we put some, ultimately in my budget proposal, we put some money towards doing something, but not to the same level as what we were looking at. Unfortunately, it was about $10,000 plus to produce and mail or distribute, you know, that type of document. We felt we need, still need to do something, but we're just not gonna be able to go to that level, uh, that we were doing just a few years ago. And that will be the extent of my comments. I am open for any questions.
Questions? I got Cindy and Ken.
I have a question, Matt. I just have a comment. Your office is running very smoothly and, you know, again, I, I'd like to, uh...
Oh, yeah, sure. This is the public meeting. Sorry, Cindy.
No, your office is running smoothly and I attribute that primarily to the women in your office. Not, not that you gentlemen aren't doing these jobs.
The women in the office, you notice that?
That's very discriminatory.
I have to say, it is true, because, because of your absence, you know, we call or, or people have issues and both of the young ladies are very professional and very, um, accommodating to people. So having said that, I would fully support Maya, um, and of course Debbie too. So I, I think that's wise, what, what you're looking to do and I, um, thank you for thinking ahead and, and doing that, going ahead to the budget. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Cindy. Ken?
Tom?
Tom?
You have a stipend here of $5,600.
Yep.
What's that for?
Those are the, uh, non-union benefits for the three, so it'd be for the assistant town manager, uh, the secretary, and then the new secretary position going full-time.
Benefits that they get in pay or...
Yeah, if you may, well, I don't know if you remember back, but, uh, right around 2000, 2001, council adopted, uh, a program for non-union employees to get, uh, 3% of their salary in what they call a non-union stipend and they can use it for different types of, uh, of benefits, uh, whether it's to use for, um, yeah, you know...
Cafeteria style.
Yeah, cafeteria-style, thank you. That's what I was trying to think of. Cafeteria-style benefits that could actually, uh, put money towards their, um, healthcare contributions. Uh, there's, I think, four or five different, uh, there's four or five different options that they could use that money for, but it, it's not paid out to them. It has to be used in one of those, uh, fine ways.
And then position classification. You only have one assistant town manager in here?
Yeah, and, and that's because, and you'll see that on Saturday when we meet, we're, we're gonna account for the cost of that position in the development services budget still.
Okay. And I know it's kind of a sore subject, but I know yourself and other people have gone a while without raises in your department. Is that the case this year also? I mean, 'cause we can't, I appreciate it, but you've given it up a few years now, Matt, so. Is this including the raise you would normally get or not?
No, there's, you know, with all non-union, we, we don't budget pay increases. That's something that, you know, obviously we talked about later on in the process and council will lay out what, what, you know, non-union benefit increases would be.
Right, it's just I have a problem if the unions keep getting raises. We cannot hold back from the non-union people, so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Tom?
Yeah, on the, on the reproduction, no, uh, uh, printing, start printing the book against the public and...
Yeah, the, the calendar document that we've done.
The calendar document.
It's something that, that, as you probably were, it was very, very popular with the residents and, and it, it's a great, say, promotional tool, but it's a very, very important informational tool for the residents as well. It gives us that opportunity to kind of get our message out. And like I said, you know, the last year, we've been looking at trying to do it in a way that, that is cost-effective and, you know, we've been doing things, some things online, but it just, it doesn't reach the, the, the population that we really need to reach. And it just, again, in, in the times we are, it's just hard to put that money into the budget to do a full-scale document like that.
No, I think it's time to, uh, put it back in. I know a lot of people are, are not, you know, on the, uh, on the computer to be able to do that and they came and they come to, they pay their taxes, they, or, you know, pick up a calendar, uh, or when they're visiting in, in the town. I think it's great to bring it back again. Absolutely, thank you.
All set, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Tom?
Did you skip Cindy?
No.
No?
Cause she spoke first.
Oh, okay. Um, just two real quick ones. Um, on the, on the workers' comp, is that a people issue or is that...
No, that, that's just the, uh, the breakdown that we do. We assign to all the different departments. Primarily it's done by wages, right? Lynn?
Yes, it's done by wages and this year, uh, you have to ban, uh, and you have to, uh, to another, uh, classification, cause you're on a roll.
So, so that's why you're at 44?
You're more injury prone than, than I had first.
Wow. So is that why there's a shift? Cause normally there's nothing in that line item of any significance.
Right, that's, that's why the shift.
All right, and then the other question was, um, the, um, the medical. I assume that's because Maya becoming full-time, that's what gave you that extra jack there. We didn't have, we had, what was our increase this year?
Zero.
Zero?
Zero, which, you know, we don't talk about a lot, but, but, you know, I, I think, I think the things that, uh, you know, council allowed us to do a few years ago by going self-funded and then switching from Anthem to, to Cigna, I think, uh, this year, we've, we've got a zero, maybe even better, you never know. Last year, it was less than 4%, I think.
You're the first zero I've heard of this year.
And, and the year before that, it was less than 5%. So for the last three years, and, and in the industry, I know you know you're in.
There are double digits.
Exactly, and to be able to, to walk out the door this year without an increase is incredible.
That's because we want self-insured.
Yep.
But even still, last year you were self-insured and you still have a, you should still have an increase.
Now you're in year number...
Yeah.
Three.
Yeah, that's unheard of.
We set that up. We, we knew, this is about the time it was gonna start. We told the folks, uh, we didn't interrupt them.
Okay, that was good, thanks. Greg?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, uh, for the public, I remember when we, uh, worked on this between the Board of Ed and, and the town council, uh, we, uh, predicted that the, the savings would be after we vested ourselves and we saw that, uh, pattern. And so to, uh, to have a zero on our insurance increase because of that, I think proves that out, so I, uh, wanna compliment for that work.
Good choice.
Good choice, yeah, it is. So, some things we did a few years ago seem to work out.
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else for the manager's budget? I have, my one question on the ma, um, on the new position, or on the, uh, moving to full-time for Maya's position. How are you going to manage the time that she spends in the town manager's office? Cause I, I love the work that she does for ETV, but it's also out, it's outside the manager's office. So bringing her to full-time, which I support and believe the capacity is there in your office, that she's not going, but the assistance is needed in the town manager's office. So is there a plan to, to say, all right, she's full-time? So is there a plan to say, all right, she's full-time, but her job is seventy-five percent in the manager's office, twenty-five percent ETV, good news, Enfields? How are you going to manage that?
Well, my perspective on it is, you know, the work that Maya's been doing, even though it shows up on ETV, is really part of our outreach and educational program that we do. However, you know, going forward, as we'll talk on Saturday, you're going to see a proposal to shift a part-time person who is working for ETV in the library, move them fully into ETV and effectively become the station manager, which would then take time away or responsibilities away from the library director, but also allow more time to be spent on doing production for ETV. So the thought process is we're going to be gaining some level of work there that wouldn't require Maya's time. So it, I believe we'll still be doing a number of things with Maya, but it's probably going to be reduced over what she's doing today. Because I just think that, you know, again, the level and the amount of things that we're doing now in the office is going to demand more of the stuff that is being done, that needs to be done in the office. So it's going to be a little bit of a loss. I think, you know, the next evolution of ETV going forward is, you know, maybe to get somebody similar to Maya to be able to take over some of those responsibilities, but that's probably, you know, a year or so away, that's not going to happen this upcoming year. And Councilman Nelson is, you know, just, you know, we could do kind of like, you know, the Enfield Idol for TV or something like that.
We could do like the Joey and Ken Show, Laurel and Hardy, the Three Stooges. Fat and skinny. But... Joey, don't call yourself fat on TV.
No, I pointed to you.
You know, we are finding, if you recall, the economic development video that ETV and Maya put together, they're working on a promotional tool for the FRC right now. You know, there's just, there's so much we can spotlight for the town of Enfield in using this, that, again, you know, the economic development video, for instance, you know, it's about a five-minute video, you know, we were getting calls from companies that were willing to do that for twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, and did it all in-house, and I would put it up against any one of those companies that were offering to do it for twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. So we have a great skill level here that we keep developing and developing, but again, you know, our priority is wanting to be the things that service the council more, service the residents a little bit more, and so we're going to lose a little bit there, but there'll still be some work done, but not as much as what we've done in the past.
Absent funding, is there anything that precludes Maya, because she's a great personality, to do any ETV work, you know, outside her normal day in the town manager's office, evenings, weekends?
It will get into, it's something that we try to stay away from in terms of, you know, overtime.
So that, it would kick her into overtime, because...
Yeah.
A, a person can't hold two roles.
Correct.
So...
And similar, in fact, you know, she's kind of doing it now, and will still be doing some of those things. And that's why I think, you know, we're going to start looking, again, not as part of the upcoming year, but probably the following year, to develop, you know, maybe some part-time, you know, person like Maya that can step in as well. Because I think, you know, the strategy, going to that, we're talking about now, it's on Saturday, but the strategy is that, again, ETV, if you look from where we started back in 2006 to where we're at now, we want to evolve it into more programming, original programming at the local level. And so moving a full-time position from library, and doing it, by the way, within the same costs that we budgeted this year, we're doing that and actually giving more time in the library staff-wise at the same time, which is incredible. But it's allowing us then to start doing more original programming, which I think is something that, again, we just, as we heard last night, we don't do enough to get the message out of what's going on, and that's going to be one of our tools going forward to get the message out of what's going on in town.
Okay, cool. Anyone else?
One quick, if I could, on ETV, and, you know, I asked this of you, I know what the answer's going to be, but, you know, ratings of ETV, to know how many people are actually watching it, so we can, you know, if so many people watch, then I'd be more in favor of pouring more and more into it, because it's, you know, there's not a commercial television station that doesn't look at their ratings to see what we're doing, and if we're, if we're meeting the target audience's demands. And I know that the cable companies won't allow that to us. Is there any way in the future to try to lobby them to let us have those numbers?
Well, you know, when we started streaming and actually putting a lot of our videos on YouTube...
Which is awesome, too, I might add.
Has actually given us an ability to get a little bit of that without, you know, begging Cox to find out, you know, what potential viewership it is.
Right.
And Henry has all these numbers, and I'm sure he's going to share them with council in his presentation on Saturday. But, you know, he does have the number of hits on the different videos that have been placed out on YouTube. And unfortunately, council meetings are not in the top five, so...
You know, I see that's underused, too. And maybe that's an advertising thing to get the word out to more people that, on your demand, is, you know, YouTube, you can pick it up any time of the day you would like, and that's, that's so much more convenient than waiting for it to come around on the loop. And maybe that's where the future is for us, to get our word out, is in YouTube.
Yeah, I think, again, looking at the generational difference, you know, the older, you know, get up to our age.
I'm doing it, though.
I know, but, but, you know...
What'd you find it?
We're a little bit, we're, I think, a little bit...
You're right, slow on the back on that one, absolutely.
But, you know, when you start looking at, you know, the teens and twenty-somethings, and hopefully, we're going to be, you know, bringing it into our community, keeping it within our community, you know, those type of things are very important. I was reading the other day about, you know, the TV-less, you know, households, and that's, that's what's going to happen, you know. Ten years from now, yes, there's only maybe fifteen, twenty percent of the households with TVs, traditional TVs, connected to a video box. It's going to be, you know, YouTube, it's going to be, you know, other streaming type of things that people can watch on their, you know, in their time, whenever they want to do it, so.
The TVs are set for that now.
Exactly.
And I'd like to see that more on more of our literature, too. We watch this on YouTube also, or, you know, ETV let people know it's out there without those bugs and logos of Facebook or whatever we intend to do in the future, everywhere. So, you know, even in those printies we just talked about, all the old, you know, the old way of doing things, we've got to put all the new, you know, bugs on it, so people see those icons and then move to it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I think five percent of the council meeting viewing is Joey watching himself talk on TV.
Now, is the ratings that you say Henry's going to give to us, not the ratings, but the views?
Number of clicks.
Because when you go to YouTube, you can actually...
See it, yeah.
See it, and we'll say, you know, watched by twenty-five people.
Right, yep.
Now, is that a true number, or is that someone that's watched it from start to finish, or is it that...
So they came back three times.
I think it's clicked out.
So...
It's not accurate.
It's only a hit per se, because actually, when you actually look, I was surprised that some aren't watched more than that they actually are, that, that they're pretty low. And so you'll even get some of the good news Enfield ones, so like the recycling one was very popular, and people probably shared it and it moved around, but other ones, people don't know they're there, and maybe, you know, ten, fifteen people are viewing it.
That's a key, you get the nail on the head.
So it's, how do you get the message out that...
It's like you've got to promote the post to get people to share the post and more people watch the post.
Because if you don't say that it's there...
Right.
How do you know it's there?
I think you, can't you put, can't Paul stick it up on the website? You just have like the top three revolving ones to share?
Yeah, and that's actually, you know, something I left out with, with the addition of Maya, or additional time for Maya, that we've talked about within the office, is allowing us to be a little bit more into the social media. I mean, it's, right now, we kind of view that as a luxury, but we've been talking for a length to try to develop a better strategy to reach out to people. And it's just, you know, to do it right, you have to be committed to doing it. If you don't have the amount of time necessary to do that, you just, it's never going to reach the level you want. So we're feeling that, you know, that's going to be an opportunity with her in the office to start doing a little bit more with the social media. But there's a greater strategy we have to talk about at some point, put together, you know, how to do a good communication with the residents. And it's just, you know, I remember back in the mid-'90s as a manager, you know, it was funny, everybody was talking about use of, you know, governmental access channels as, you know, the way to communicate. And, you know, we come up now, everybody's talking about the social media is the way to communicate, so.
You're always going to be ten years behind.
Things have changed in ten, fifteen, right.
Right.
But it is, again, when we look at the demographic that, you know, we want to keep, we want to attract, that twenty to thirty-year-old, it's a different world, it's a different world from us.
I think if you have, if we end up, if we end up to the world of, we have a Facebook page that is not one that people can actually respond to, it's just out there, and they can look at it.
Constantly pouring out information.
Pouring out information, then you can do that, and it'll work.
Yes.
But if you, until you do that, because we can't liability-wise, Greg, you know, send it to Greg, Greg, put it on your wall, and then I put it on EIP's wall, and somebody else puts it on Enfield's, we can't do that.
Right, and that's, you know, why we've stayed away from it, because there is a certain amount of danger associated with doing those things.
Just create a Facebook page, it's outlawing it.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking to do.
It's requiring maintenance or anything.
Go ahead, Greg.
Just to, as far as the social media, the key thing with social media is to, you have to continuously put something out there a day. I have a few pages, Fourth of July celebration, I operate that page as administrator, and I can see how many hits, I can see, I can see demographics, men, women, ages, and everything, I can check all that. But what happens is the more that you put out information, like for us, as we get closer into May and June, when we've been, data, we're putting something out, then you begin to see the readership, because what happens is the algorithms are designed to put it out to more people than, so it's an all system. But going back to the idea of YouTube, we put out the alerts, of, you know, people sign up for an alert where they get the meeting, the agenda, the minutes. We could put a hyperlink saying that, just, you know, for information, is that selected, most of our meetings, or whatever meetings, meetings are put on YouTube and have the link, hyperlink, and you put a disclaimer, not all town meetings are videotaped or whatever, but all those information go out emails to all the people signed up. That hyperlink will be there for them to hit, and that'd be a great way for them to pop on that, and they can watch a meeting, so that would be probably a great way of marketing.
That's a good idea.
Great, thanks, Greg. Anyone else? Town manager's budget?
Okay.
The last one is the town council budget. I put in a hundred percent raise for our rely.
Awesome.
Zero and zero.
What step am I, what step am I? I know, Scott, you maxed out on steps, but there's some of us that are still on steps, right?
I want to give up my raise this year and give it to Ken Nelson.
But I'm, I'd be so nice, I'd give you my step...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
...in exchange for your step.
I'd like the benefits to double.
What you see...
Every time you're with me. Is that a vastly different document that you normally see as a proposal? We go back, we tried to put in what looks like reasonable travel costs. The audit this year, I think, is staying the same at fifty-three, four, eight, so there's no increase this year on that. That's the big enchilada in your budget, is that audit, so.
Go ahead, Tom.
We talked about it last year, and how did we end up this year with travel? I know CCM didn't have the dollars it did the year before, but do we need ten thousand for travel?
Well, it's, you know, what I, I start at kind of what we always put in, so, and it usually, you guys usually cut that at some point.
All right, so you don't have another reason in there that is not out of the ordinary or whatever?
Right, yep.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I got.
Greg?
Just one thing I'll mention, too, is I remember last year, Deputy Nelson, because of a year that there is an election, in case some, that news come on, and has suggested it might be good for those new coming on, which I, it was a great experience for me to go last time, my first year, but I didn't want to rob of that experience, be a part of that, going to the Washington...
Right, good point, because it is an election year.
Right.
There'll be a lot of new Republicans up here.
Why, where are you going?
No. And just to let you know, we, what we have here, we budgeted, sorry, just cut this, we budget for a certain amount of people to travel to that. Again, it's only a guess, but on the travel expenses, we put in the cost for four council members to go to DC on that one. And again, if you really look at, that's kind of what the average tends to be, so.
Tom?
And we do joke, we get no compensation, no stipends, nothing. So nobody gets the wrong idea out there, there is, this is totally for the love of it. Matt, one question, on your printing, how are we doing from, it wouldn't show it on, from the iPads to today? I don't think it shows, it goes back far enough now.
Yeah, no, you know, I was, I was thinking about putting those numbers together to see what last year versus this year is, but I would guarantee you that we are purchasing less paper today than what we were before the iPads and the use of the computers.
Great.
I mean, there's no doubt about that. I think staff time related to it is devoted a lot less as well.
Got to be, definitely. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Anyone else? Town council budget? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
That's it, there's no need to go into executive session. Before we adjourn, so everyone knows, so Saturday, we have our budget, we have our budget meeting.
Nine AM.
Nine AM, here in the Enfield room, projected to go to about three, three-thirty.
Yep.
Breakfast and lunch served, I heard.
Yes, yes.
One thing, Scott, I've got to say, I will not be able to attend. I had made an earlier commitment with my grandchildren on Saturday, taking them up to Boston for the opening of Daniel Hall. They have the street performers out there, so I'm sorry, I'm really, I'd like to apologize now to the department heads that are here.
You'll be able to catch it on YouTube.
I will definitely, I promise I will catch it on YouTube.
Send us an email, Tom, and we'll say whatever you want us to say.
Okay, and you can actually look on Facebook, and I will mark myself at Daniel Hall, so you know I'm not kidding.
That's important.
Okay. We know some folks won't be able to make it, so. With that being said...
Motion to adjourn.
By Cindy, seconded by Tom. All those in favor? Those opposed, we are adjourned.
You're a wizard.